Okay, I'd like to open the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Monday, November 9th, 2010, 2020. Wow.
Right.
The first item that we have is the approval of the agenda, and I'm looking for a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, let the record reflect that was Adam.
I second that.
Okay, please state your name when you're seconding or because there's, we do have a new minutes person.
Okay, Joe Clay, I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, as we discussed, we did hire a new minutes person.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 13th, 2020. We don't have those available. So I am looking for a motion from the board to defer the approval of those minutes until the next meeting.
Motion to defer, Todd.
I'll second that, this is Adam.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an appeal from Erica and Aaron, and I excuse me if I get the name wrong, Rizik.
It's Riza.
26401 Dundee for a variance to allow a four-foot gate and fence in the side yard. Contrary to section, uh, stuff, stuff, stuff. The proposed fence gate is further than 50% forward of the house depths and no side door to enclose exists. So I would like to give the Rizics, again, I apologize, a chance to speak about their plans.
Sure.
Is there anybody here?
Yep. Um, this is Erica Riza. So I, we are looking to install a fence. We currently have two dogs and our back door leads to a patio that is completely cement. So currently they go out our back door onto the cement and then walk around her little side yard between our two houses, ours and the Kate's house right directly next to us. And they go to do their business, but the problem is, is to keep them safe. In order to do that, I have them on two separate lines. And they literally tangle themselves and we have to be out there constantly. I have three kids going in and out the back door. And every time they go in and out, I'm afraid the dog's gonna run out. On top of it, because the way that our yard is, we're a corner house. People are always walking by our house with their dogs or themselves. And it appears, even though our dogs are on lines, that their, our dogs are, you know, barking and it, I've seen people literally jump and get startled just because they think there's a free dog running at them, which obviously they're not free, they're on lines. Um, so we're looking to just enclose an area to make it safer for not only our dogs, but the neighborhood also.
Thank you, Erica. Hank?
Yes, sir. Uh, okay, give me a second here. Okay, everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So basically what it says here, I'm gonna put you guys over here. Um, so basically the issue here is if you can look at lot situation. The Riza's lot is right here on the corner, if you follow my cursor. House fronts on Dundee. And it's problematic for them because they have nowhere near the amount of usable square footage on the lot that other families might. So when you take a look at it, it's emphasized even further by the aerial view that I have here. What they're looking to do is they're looking to come up with the front portion of the house here. This is their front. This is the side, which is the most used portion of the house. But this is the technical front of the house. And the problem with this is, is that as you can see, this area is all front yard. This little bit here is a side yard. That's their whole technical backyard right there where the cursor is. There's little, no space. And then they have the short side of their lot setback, which is the space they want to enclose. Even if ZBA allows them to enclose this space, they will still have less yard than anybody else in a similar situation. So this particular lot, because it's different, um, a lot creates the need for the fencing variance, which is where I believe they're going with. So standard for dimensional variances are especially unique conditions and circumstances that exist, which are peculiar to the land, which we've already seen. The lot configuration, the structure where we've already seen how the structure is put on the lot. Or the building involved, which is the same thing, which are not generally applicable to other land structures or building in the same district. Well, realistically, this is a one-off with that lot configuration in the house. So this is not something that everybody has. Uh, two, the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. Uh, the Riza's have provided, uh, information from their neighbor and we have a letter from their neighbor, uh, that indicate that they are completely in favor of this. And, uh, so as a result, being a corner lot would be the only affected neighbor, we do not have any reason to believe that there would be otherwise detriment to the general welfare. Three, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the access of the applicant. Here, one might argue that the applicant, uh, the Riza family had, uh, didn't put the house, didn't plot the lot. Everything was there when they got there. And as a result, they're left to the different circumstances which they have. And four, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Under the terms of this ordinance and that the variance is the minimum necessary. Realistically, um, it's definitely the minimum. It's all that they could be reasonably expected to get. And it would afford them substantial justice if it's the pleasure of the zoning board of appeals to do so. Uh, to allow them to have some fenced in yard. So that's kind of where they would go with this. So having said that, I'm going to go back here. So that anybody wants to take a last look at that, um, so you can get an idea of where it is. Again, this is their front yard. This is their side yard. This space here is the rear yard. And here is the side yard and this is the space they want to fence in here and to here. This they can do by right, this they need your approval for.
Hank, I just, I wanted to correct something really quickly because it is a side yard, um, but it's from the front yard where you had initially.
Right here.
Yeah. And then it would just, it wouldn't even, it would not go back behind the garage. It would actually be.
Yeah, but you're, you're entitled to that. So if you wanted to go here, you would be entitled to that by right.
Okay.
Right here is what you have, what I'm saying is right here is where you need their permission. Right here is right. And the reason I point out the rear yard is only to show that there really isn't one.
Okay.
So that, that's kind of where I'm going with that because technically this would normally be by way the house is situated and your use of the house. This would be what your technical, what your actual backyard is, which is really negligible. That's why I'm pointing that out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't misunderstood. Thank you.
No, 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 you, you are just, you're entitled to that space. That's why I didn't say anything. So, all right, I'm gonna stop the screen share if anybody needs it, I can back up. So, uh, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours again.
I would like to open it up to any commissioners who would like to discuss the issue. Are there any comments? Please.
I have a quick question. Um, based on the packet we've gotten, uh, sent to us and, and the slide you put up there, Hank. Um, I get the fence going between the neighbors' yards and going down the fence, the, the lot line. But I'm confused where the fence, other fence would be with the other gate that they're talking about.
Well, it wasn't necessarily a gate. It was either a fence or a gate and I didn't want to, um, I, what I didn't want to do is I didn't want to leave out the possibility that it might in fact be a gate. They've added a gate on the drawing that they have that was submitted to me in blue with like the green showing the grass and the gate. They're showing, they're showing gates and a patio and that. Um, all of that would be permissible. Your only concern is on the south side of the house, which if you go, their drawing doesn't exactly, um, help, uh, let me just do this real quick here.
I, I, I think I get, I understand. That's why I asked the question because it didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't think we needed a variance for that other one.
No.
On the backside one.
It's the one who's on the backside, which is technically the side. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. That's my only question.
Okay.
Are there any other comments from, uh, from the board? Not seeing any, I will open it up to public participation. Is there any member of the public present that would like to make a comment about this issue? Not seeing any, I close public participation and, uh, give it back to the board for a motion or further discussion.
I have a question. Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, question for Hank, Hank.
Yes, sir.
If there was a side door, they could have at least part of what they're asking for, right?
That is correct.
So in terms of visual, it really would be the same.
It, it really would be the same. And then the, the only thing is, is that their side door is on the other side of the house.
I see.
So if you're gonna face like ethical difficulty or hardship is, to me at least, where the house sits on the lot, they don't have any yard to speak of.
The second thing is, even if there were a side door on that side, it, they couldn't bring, by right, they couldn't bring the, the fence with the gate all the way to the front of the house.
That is correct. They could bring it three feet in front of a side door.
I think that in terms of, of the ask here, um, it's, it's exacerbated to some extent by wanting to have it all the way down toward the front of the house, just to enlarge the area. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, you could take a look at, you could say that. I guess, uh, conversely, they might say is that even if they got it all the way to the front, they would have less yard than a typical lot in the neighborhood. So I mean, there's a, there's a check and balance with that. I mean, it, you could say yes, Mitch, to say what you're saying is, is definitely correct. Um, they would mitigate it by saying that even if you give it to us all the way up to the front, I'll still have less than everybody else.
We do have this sort of lesser impact doctrine that floats around from time to time. I don't usually raise it, but some people do. Um, at least on academically, you could say they could add, you know, we could grant the variance, but smaller. I'm not in favor of that. I think that the fact that they have this almost pie-shaped lot, that's almost completely built out in the rear. Is a very strong argument for the practical difficulty created by the configuration of the house on an already odd-shaped lot. And it seems fair to, for people to be able to capture essentially a piece of the side yard as a, as a rear yard in those circumstances. That's not a motion, but that's my argument for a motion.
Thanks, Mitch. Uh, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? I'm looking for a motion.
I make a, a motion to, uh, move to grant the appeal for a variance at, uh, 26401 Dundee. To allow the four-foot gate fence in the side yard contrary to section 40-10 point.
Second, Ben.
As you should have.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Hank.
No, I was just, you, you guys are, you voted already, so.
You wanted me to say the rest of it, didn't you? The other option, a little bit more detail, Hank?
No, what I was looking for was basically an addendum to the motion that would, um, oh, would, would, uh, state that it thoroughly meets the requirements of the spirit of the ordinance and that it meets the standard for dimensional variance. Something of that nature. But you're good. You voted on it and it, it works. Believe me, I'm sure the Riza's don't need any other documentation with that. So if you're okay, Mr. Chair, we're okay.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I want to thank the, uh, the Riza's for, for coming out. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name the first time.
It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
May I make a comment to, to the chair and others on this appeal?
Yes.
As a matter of precedent, as we, we hear a lot about dogs. And their need for enclosed space. But I don't think that the issue of dogs or not dogs was what was, is persuasive here. The issue is simply, can you, can you enclose some additional space outside your house to use it as you would a rear yard because of the lot configuration? The, the fact of what you want to use it for in terms of a dog or small children or what have you, is not really, in my view, a basis for a variance as such.
No, it's like, it's lot largely irrelevant.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you could be, have turtles back there. It really doesn't matter what, what you're saying. It's just the
Right.
shape of the lot and how, how it's config, you know, how it's set up.
Yeah.
The variances should run with the land or be created as a result of the land and/or a structure on it. That creates a practical difficulty or hardship. And then you would have the opportunity to alleviate that by doing something, which is what you did.
Okay. Any more discussion on that issue? Not seeing, we will move on to the next one. It's a matter of an appeal from Joan Schwartz at 13128 Ludley. For a variance to allow 10.1% for a total of 40.1% more lot coverage and 922, 21 square feet. More than the allowed 2409 square feet maximum house size totaling 33, 30 square feet. Article 4 District Regulation Section, so then one family districts. Uh, is there someone from, uh, representing Joan's or is Joan here?
I'm here and I believe my builder, uh, David Schmierin, he was on a minute ago.
I'm, I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
And also Zach Ostroff.
I'm Zach. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, well, uh, go ahead. I would like to hear your presentation. We would like to hear your presentation.
All right, so I'll go first. My name's David Schmierin. I'm with Bingham Development, contractor. Um, Mrs. Schwartz contacted us a number of months ago to look at a possible addition to the rear of her home. Uh, its original intent for the space was to be used as an art studio, which she currently has in her, uh, basement. Um, she's finding it more increasingly difficult as the years go by to get up and down the stairs. So we looked at, uh, designing a, a room, single story off the back of the home that would be used. Initially as an art studio, but also as discussions continued with Mrs. Schwartz. Creating a space that as time went by could be converted easily to a master bedroom. As all of the bedrooms in the home are on the second floor. Uh, this would allow her to age and place in the home. Um, there is an existing bathroom on the first floor, so she would have access and use of that. The addition is a single-story addition. It is in the rear of the home. It was designed to use the same building materials. Um, and reflect, uh, basically a seamless design and architecture of the existing house. Um, beyond that, obviously we have issues that we're addressing today regarding lot coverage and total square footage. Um, there is a, as a side note too, as, as part of the review today. Um, there is a covered carport on the front of the home that occupies nine, 809, I'm sorry. 829.5 square feet. Um, that I believe. I, I guess Mrs. Schwartz would put that on the table as, as far as, um, having to, uh, work with that space, eliminate it, remove the roof. Um, some consideration if needed. Um, obviously the, the covered carport is not nearly as necessary. And needed for her future use in the home as she continues to age in the home.
Thank you, David. Joan, would you like to, uh, mention anything?
Um, yes, well, uh, David brought up the carport and, um, again. What I'm looking to do, if I took the car, put the roof off the carport. That, that, so then I wouldn't have need of variance in the back. And I'm hard pressed to see how, how that works. Because I'd still have the driveway that would go all the way up to the front of the house. So, um, it's, I don't understand how the, that would interfere with what I'm asking in the back. Um, and I had both knees replaced, uh, in the last five years. And it is hard to go up and down to my studio. I, um, my, some of my work is very large and very heavy because I use mostly glass. So, um, quite often I can't move any of these pieces myself. And it would be easier for me if I could be able to work on the first floor. Um, any other, any questions for me or?
No, if not, then, um.
Can I, Hank? Add a couple of things?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Zach Ostroff, I, uh, worked on the plans, uh, the architectural plans. Um, the, the carport represents just under 6% of the, the total lot coverage. So, you know, we're at, uh, the, on the site plan it shows 40.1%. Um, you know, if we, if we subtract out that, that, um, carport, we're within the, uh, you know, parameters of what we're allowed for, for lot coverage. So, um, you know, I'm not, there's not a lot, I, I don't think there's a lot of homes in Huntington Woods that have carports like that right in the front. Um, there's a few of them, I think, but not, uh, but not many. So it's kind of a unique, uh, situation.
And, um, if I may, Zach and I worked very hard on the, on the design. Uh, again, being an artist, I wanted to make sure that aesthetically for everyone. This addition is gonna look like it's always been there and part of the house. It's not just, I'm not just slapping on a room with white siding and that kind of thing. Um, so aesthetically, it's going to be beautiful and like the rest of my house. And my neighbors on both the east and the west, neither one, those would be the ones that are, would be, uh, as far as what they would see. They would see that more than, um, than anybody else really. And they're all in favor of it, as are all the other neighbors that I, I don't know how many are on right now tonight. But, uh, we had a little celebration in the street last night and everybody was fine with it. Um, and, uh, I was gonna say something else about it, but now I can't remember.
I have questions for the applicant.
Yes.
And there was the celebration, a celebration of the plans for the addition?
No, no, we just had a little political captive.
Well, okay. I, I did see, here's a question I do have. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, we did see a, a letter from the person who states that he, the, the rear of his house and the rear of your house are contiguous. Uh, not a, not, same last name as mine, but not a relation. Um, he said it would be a monstrosity.
Who said that?
I don't know. It's in the record, Hank. Who said that?
Uh, the neighbor to the rear.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah.
Um, I thought that was a stirring language. I, do you, do you or the builder feel it would be a monstrosity?
He, I believe, hadn't even seen plans when he made that remark. So I want to put that out. And also I just, back to the, the carport, the carport was part of the house when we bought the house. So it wasn't like I added that on.
Now, the, all right, my, the second question is this. Regarding the carport, there've been a number of comments made, but it's very hard to figure out what you actually would commit to because it appears numerically. That, and Hank, I'd like you to say yes or no, this is true or not. Would removal of the roof of the carport deduct that 829 square feet from the overall house size and the lot coverage?
It would not rep, it would not have anything to do with the house size at all, but it would go towards lot coverage.
I see.
How, however, um, when I get to my, and I have my statistics, when I get to my presentation, you'll see what I'm talking about. Would it wipe it all out? The answer is no. They would still be over, but, um, in a different type of, I, I'll, I'll be able to answer your question better when I have my graphics up.
All right, I, just asking an applicant again, just if, if it were material to the decision of the board in any way, would a, you be willing to remove the carport? In order, you know, is to advance a decision in your favor on the addition?
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, it's, it's helpful for me at 74 to have my car covered and not have to clean it of snow. So in that respect, um, I would like to, to keep it, um, if possible. And the front of my house is not gonna look at all different in any way, shape or form than it looks now. The peak on the, uh, studio room is much lower, doesn't go all the way up to the second floor. It is by no means gonna be a, I'm, I'm struck, whatever he said, month, whatever he said. It's, believe me, it's gonna be one of the nicer additions you'll see. And again, being an artist, I really care what it looks like.
Thank you, Joan. I mean, I will point out one thing, and that is the best addition is one you can't tell is an addition. Hank?
Yes, Chair. Okay, um, I'm gonna share the screen here. And I'm gonna go to this. Everybody see?
Yes.
Okay. So basically what we're looking at is the appeal from Ms. Schwartz, uh, to allow 40.1% lot coverage and 921 square feet more than the allowed 2409 maximum house size. Here's the issue. When you take a look at the house, this area up and through here is the carport. The carport, me, represents lot coverage only, has nothing to do with the maximum house size. So the issue of having a large carport, she does. But as you take a look and you go through this, this is the carport and this is the front view. Carport is an essential piece of architecture to that particular type of structure. Even though it's exceptionally large, it goes with the house. And the resident would be entitled to have some kind of protection for her car. So there would be a 400 square foot, set of 440 square foot set aside. Whether the carport comes down or not. So realistically, she needs the carport. If it was up to me, I would say that you might want to consider that the carport is in the front of the house. The addition is a single-story rear addition, which is somewhat modest in size. So as a result, taking down the carport to gain the room doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Because then she would have no place covered to park her car. And in Michigan, that's not necessarily a prudent use of the property. Also, in addition, by virtue of her setbacks, there's really only a part, there used to be a garage back there, which was a shared garage. By her and her neighbor. And by shared, I mean the property line went right down the middle of the garage. So the garage was removed. And this is really her only means of having any protection for that. Architecturally, it makes more sense to keep it because otherwise the front of the house would look entirely different. Um, you might want to ask Mr. Ostroff if that's gonna be the case because he's an architect. But I would tell you that these type of houses with these type of designs, the carport is the center, the central feature to the front of the house. It leads you to the front door. And that's what these type of architecture is. That's one thing. Second, the addition on the back is for a space that would be used for a studio. a studio slash perhaps future bedroom or whatever room they decide to do it. The issue with this is that you have a lot of the space on the second floor and a lot of the same space on the first floor. The addition, the house went straight up from this. And as a result, the second floor mimics the first floor as it carries down to the foundation. Part of the problem with that is, is that a lot of the space that she has upstairs, albeit there, is really not usable for any regular purpose for the house. Whereas a great room, a studio, a den, call it whatever you would will, that type of space is something that is usually available on the first floor. And because of the design of the house is not readily available, so you could take the task that says, I had to let somebody in, you, the tack, the tack that says, uh, this is a reasonable use of the property. But having said that, the current living area is 2874. The house is already over the size. And the reason that it's over the size is it would have been fine with the old zoning ordinance, but now that there's a new zoning ordinance, which already admitted has happened a couple of years ago already. This is not news, this is the way that it is, would have been permitted. This house predates even that. The proposed structure would be 3,300 square feet, while the allowed would be 2,409 according to the new zoning ordinance. Hence the 924, the 921 square feet that you need in order to legitimize the space that's already there, plus the new space. The addition's only 456 square feet. The current lot coverage exists at 33.9 square feet. So even if you took off the carport, you took that off and added the room back on, you're still, it could be a trade-off. The proposed addition covers 6.2% of the lot, uh, which equals the 40.1 square feet. So are you going to take off more than 6.2% with it? Yeah, but you're going to put it back on. I'm not sure that taking the carport off is, uh, something that would fit with the architecture. That's one of the things that would come up to me. And the current carport being 829 square feet, um, again, it's legal nonconforming. But the issue with that is, is that if you go back, where did I go here? Here, it also covers the walkway that leads to the house. So there's more to it than just the carport. So while yes, there is a substantive size for a carport here, there's also an area here, which is the front porch. It's also covered by it, again, by design. So that's, that's the one thing that you have with that. Uh, I want to go back to this page here. This shows the area that you have here that's covered. This shows the front yard. This is the house next door. This is a narrow side yard. It's what had in this driveway here. So they shared, they went back to this garage, which I told you split it, but they've taken that out. And as a result, they want to addition back here, if you can see where my cursor is. So that's kind of what they want to do. Now, I'll still point out that this addition area is not in the rear yard setback. So there's no setback variance that's required for that. So again, now we go to the standards for dimensional variance. And, uh, where did I go? The special or unique conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, which are not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. One, um, they have an unusual carport that's already there. It's been there, it was put there legally. Two, they have a house size that was already there and was put there legally. And they did take down a garage, but there's no opportunity for expansion of any kind as it sits, without a zoning board of appeals action. So anything that they wanted to put on the house would require ZBA approval as the house already is over. But it was legal at the time that it was built. The variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. You do have a gentleman that's sending a letter saying that he didn't want to look at it. He was opposed to it. I did also forward you a good half a dozen or so emails from people that had said that they favored it and they had no problem with it. And you do have quite the audience in, in present this evening that you can hear from. And then three, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. I don't know that Ms. Schwartz is the original owner or is not the original owner to the house. I don't believe so. But having said that, the carports there, the houses there, the footprints there, and the size of the house is there. Whether or not the square footage lends itself to that. One thing that we also have to consider too is that based on the plans that you have, I don't have a footage for the staircase. And normally we back the staircase out of the equation. So there's a little bit more that they're, that they're actually showing. So the figure that they're showing for their house is actually, um, at a minimum, 36 square feet less. So Zach, you could probably bear me out on that because that, that would normally come off in the figures, but I don't have anything that would indicate what that is. Four, a literal interpretations of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance and the variance is the minimum necessary. Here you run into a couple of things. One is, uh, the right of an applicant who's lived in the house or the, that has been there and the home has been there to make any addition whatsoever. Now, on the other hand, there is a point of time when you run out of space. The lot is exceptionally deep for lots in the R1D district. Most lots in the R1D districts are typically 50 by 125, which is 6,250 square feet. This lot hits over 7,000 square feet, so it is substantially larger than most in the area. Then that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Mr. Ostroff can answer him or Mr. Schmearin. And even Ms. Schwartz can answer it. But other than that, I don't have anything to, more to add to this. Unless the board would like to ask some questions, I'll stop the screen share.
I just wanted to add, I'm the third owner of this house and I've been in it for 32 years. And I've also lived in two other homes in Huntington Woods. So I've lived here all the total of 49 years.
Yeah, the lot's 45 wide, but it's exceptionally deep. It's 170 feet deep. So there's a substantial, there's a substantial distance between the back of the house and/or the proposed addition to the rear property line. So it's nowhere near the 30 feet that the R1D district would normally require. It's going to be even at a minimum, uh, 30, 40 feet beyond that.
And I'd also say that currently, if you're in the backyard looking at the existing house, the second floor doesn't have any, any glass whatsoever. It's just basically a wall of siding. The addition that we're proposing, you know, incorporates all the standards for glazing and glass. So it actually is going to be much, much nicer to look at this addition from the back than it would, you know, today, just because it, it's, it's just not a wall of siding.
Typically, a, uh, structure like this, Mr. Chair would go to the planning commission. But it doesn't need to. Mr. Ostroff has designed it in such a manner that the architecture is consistent with the original house and it meets the criteria not to have to go to the planning commission in every respect, except for the square footage of the house and the lot coverage issues. So if you give your okay to this this evening, um, they would be okay to come in for plan approval.
I did have one question. This is Joe Playa. Ms. Schwartz, did you investigate seeing whether or not you could get your, uh, your art studio ins, inside the house, uh, square footage?
Well, it's in my basement right now. I work in glass, mostly glass and mixed media. So, um, it's messy as far as to do it just on a, you know, regular first floor. So, um, I, you know, I have a living room and a, in a kitchen and dining room on the first floor. It's, it's open to, uh, the kitchen's all open to like a family room.
So there's no space on the first floor then to put an art studio?
Um, I suppose, uh, it's not really my preference to do that. That would take away, I don't, it would take away my living room. I also have two dogs and this way I can curtail them when I'm cutting, so they're not walking through glass. Um, and some, and some of my pieces are really large to carry up and down the stairs. The products are large. So basically I guess I'll say no. I mean, I, yeah, well, leave me with a kitchen, little family room and a dining room. And it's all open because the house is so contemporary. Everything, everything's open. There are no doors except the bathroom door to close things off.
Hank, this, there are no setback, uh, issues that we are dealing with here, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, I would like to open it up to the board for comment. Anyone have any comments?
Mitch, if, I, I don't know if you could say, I'm trying to raise my hand. I don't know how you want to regulate this.
Well, yeah, I, I only see, I have to go back and forth on the bar up top and I, and you're, you're not in that bar right now.
Oh, okay.
He's in a different bar.
No, I've got on gallery view. I think it works for this. The, all right, I, I do have a couple of comments. I, you know, I always try really hard to figure out a rationale for approving things. My view is we do approve quite a bit, maybe a little bit on the fringe of what a, a more tightly deciding board would approve. I, I find this very, very difficult to find a rationale. The, we're looking at a, at a home that is already over 400 feet above the legal permitted size. So we have a legal nonconforming use of over 400 feet. There's a strong policy not to enlarge nonconforming, uh, dimen, let's say dimensions. In this case, we're essentially being asked to double an already existing nonconformity in terms of house size. So it's a very significant request in terms of policy. The fact that a house is already bigger than the current legally permitted size is, is kind of hard to use as a rationale. Because if you had a 3,000 square foot house, that was, say, 600 feet over the permitted size and you came and said, I want another 1,000 feet for all these good purposes, the, the argument would be the same, that, well, I'm stuck with the 3,000, so I should be able to go higher. And that is a benefit that the other homes in the area that limited it 2,400 don't have. The, the issue of lot coverage is, is, um, maybe a little easier because there you can perhaps refer to the configuration of the lot and the unusual depth of the lot and the placement of the house to, and, and the peculiarities of the carport as an architectural feature to justify discounting the amount of lot coverage that's taken up by the carport. Since if it was just a, you know, concrete pad, it would be essentially the same. But on the house size, I just don't understand, I can't figure out a rationale other than saying I want more. It's another way of putting it. Maybe the board could, could consider this. Should we have a doctrine that says that second stories reached, reached by staircase should not be counted as part of the house size? Because that's being argued in essence. Hank argued it.
Well, I think to be clear, Mitch, my argument was just that normally when I go to the planning commission with a plan and there's a second floor addition and people are looking at square footage, we remove any square footage taken up by a staircase or by an elevator.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that small amount. I'm talking about the fact that, that unfortunately this house, for, for personal reasons, um, that understandable, the, the upstairs has become less and less usable.
That is, that is correct. That's, that's.
And that may apply to people here and there. It's part of what Huntington Woods is going through with all of this policy consideration of aging in place, et cetera, which I don't discount since I'm doing the same thing. But it just, at some point, we're stuck with the legal definitions as much as we would try to search for an answer. I mean, would we want to reinterpret the meaning of house size, for example, to discount a certain portion of the upstairs as being unusable? I, I don't know. I, I just want to raise it because I'm very troubled by in, trying to find a rationale for granting this appeal.
Thanks, Mitch. Any other comments from the, uh, on the board?
And kind of in response to that, uh, it was a couple of meetings ago, I don't remember, two or three meetings ago where we had an appeal. And it was granted and, and obviously there are different facts and circumstances. I don't remember the lot size issues or the numbers or anything. But, but, but the base, one of the bases for granting the appeal was exactly what Mitch was talking about, where the second floor was becoming unusable and it was, it was an age and place scenario. And we did grant it in that, in that situation.
I sort of vaguely remember that and I was trying to remember what the circumstances were because, but I couldn't quite, I can't remember the record in my head. Maybe it's something we could check.
I think that there was a handicap issue that was going on there too. Whereas there was, uh, one or more members of the household at that point that couldn't access the second floor readily.
Joan, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say, you know, when we bought this house, we had three kids and definitely the upstairs was what, exactly what we needed. But now that I am staying here, um, I, you know, the house right now, it isn't exactly what works for me. So that's why I'm asking to be able to do this.
Are there any other members of the board that wish to comment? So stated, because I'm, I don't see everybody.
It's Todd Gordon. So I, I, I'm in the alignment with, with Mitch on this too. I'm just trying to figure this out and wrap my head around it because there's a number of things, you know, the lot size, uh, obviously that's an issue. And some of that is, uh, we do that, uh, from a drainage perspective and, and runoff and all those good things. And we've got a lot of the cement, no matter, and I think Hank mentioned it, we take the carport away, the cement is still there. So that, that issue doesn't really clear anything up, except for make the front of the house look, uh, less desirable. Uh, and it goes away from the styling. I, I just, uh, I'm, I'm just, you know, and I, and I get, obviously your, your neighbors are in favor of this, except for the one. I mean, you've got a good, good showing here who have put up with us already and have been online for an hour to, to speak their minds. So obviously your neighbors and, and your neighborhood are in favor of this. But it, that, in the end of this, it, it really, it's nice, it's a good to know, but we have to find that niche where this makes sense. And I think that's where Mitch was going or trying to get us to go to. And I, and I, I think that's what we have to figure out, um, amongst the, uh, the zoning board right now. And I, I, I'm still looking. I'm still trying to figure it out. I, I'm not there yet. Fellow members.
Any other members of the board wish to speak? Yell now. Okay, I would like to open it up for public participation. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment about this? And the rules are the same. Please state something so I know who I'm looking at.
This is Ron Solish. I live at 13124 Ludlow. I'm, I live right next door to Joan. And I've, we've actually been neighbors for 32 years. We've, we moved in within six months of each other. And we, we are the ones with whom Joan has shared a, a garage for 32 years. We were, I think the two of us could give lessons to other people in the community about sharing space because we've done that for 32 years and we, we've never had an issue with a garage that, that crossed both of our property lines. I just want to say, number one, I, I'm in full support of granting, uh, the request and the variance. I think I heard Adam suggest that there had been a prior, uh, variance granted when there was an issue of a disability where, where a part of the house became unusable to the, to the resident. And I, I would tell you, and I, I don't, Joan's not going to come out here, there and say it, but I've lived next to her for 32 years. I've watched her live through two knee replacements. You know, her ability, her ambulatory ability, her ability to climb the steps, whether it's upstairs to her second floor or downstairs to her, to her, uh, to her art studio, uh, has significantly been impaired. Uh, and that's something I know that. And that's something I know that all of us in the neighborhood or neighbors have seen over a period of time and making an accommodation for that situation, allowing somebody who has been a part of this community to age in place makes all the sense in the world. And there is a particular need for it in this particular case. With respect, I, I just want to make a comment. I know there was this, this concept that, you know, maybe we take off the front garage. I, I, I don't see that as being a necessity or a requirement. And again, it would only create a greater hardship on the resident to, to have a senior who is aging in place that needs to add, have access to their vehicles and their cars and live through the winters here in Michigan. It, it would make no sense to, to require Joan to take that carport down. And, and over and above that, it would require the rest of us who regularly shovel that driveway to do more work. If, 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 if that carport ever came down. So I would encourage that, that not even be considered. And then finally, I would say Joan is an artist and, you know, I've met David, her, her contractor, and I know that they are putting in a quality addition. It's not going to impact us at the rear of the house. It, it's going to be, it's going to conform to the current architecture. And it's really a relatively, I mean, 400 and change, 400 feet and change, it's nothing. And it's a variance that should be granted, that should allow Joan to age in place to have her art studio and potentially be a first floor master if she ever needs that in the future. All I have to offer at this point in time.
Thanks, Ron. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please state your name.
Yes, Barry Chesterman and Elaine Weber. We are immediately to the west of Joan at 13132 Ludlow. We predate Joan by one year. We've been here 33 years. And Joan and, and her husband, David, who is no longer with us, have been wonderful neighbors for all of these years. We are very much in favor of this. I am a physical therapist. I, I have seen many people have challenges aging in place. Joan, whose studio is in the basement, has very limited ability to access that studio as her walking has become more difficult. I've had one knee replacement. Joan's had two knee replacements. It's not easy to go up and downstairs. And the stairwell to her basement is narrow, which makes access much more difficult. I strongly support the addition, which I, I'm confident is going to add to the beauty of the home and to the value of the houses in the neighborhood. So.
And as the folks who help shovel the driveway, we want the carport to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who wish to make a comment? If so.
Yeah, this is John Potter and Suzie Potter. We live across the street. We're also 32-year neighbors of Joan. And I want to kind of echo some of Ron's comments regarding Joan's desire to live in place, age in place. She's, she's willing to make a significant investment in her home to make it a beautiful space in her wonderful taste as an artist and have it flow into the rest of the house as though you would never even know it was an addition. That's significant. And, and I think it would both add to the value of the home for future resale should Joan choose to leave at some point. But it would also add value to the neighborhood and add to our tax base. And it would give her, a senior citizen in Huntington Woods, who's made a tremendous contribution to our community through her artwork and through other activities, to, to stay here and to age in place. I mean, I think that's a, that's a major consideration and the board should consider that. I don't, and I'm, and as far as the, the comment about it being a monstrosity, I think that's, that's a terrible description of what she's planning. It's a, it's going to be a beautiful space, much more beautiful than even the, the house looks right now in its current configuration. So, you know, I would urge the board to consider both her desire to improve her home and to try to stay here and live in place and age in place and to increase her investment in, in the community in, in, instead of worrying about the, the paltry additional square footage. That's my comment.
Thank you, John and Suzie. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Please state.
Barbara Haber, oh, she did unmute. Okay.
I, I live on the corner where the mailbox is. And we've lived here longer than any of you because we've been here for 44 years. And although I am not familiar with the particular addition, I know that they're good neighbors. This is a great street and I support Joan. We're getting older too. I'm almost 80 and my husband's 83. So I, I appreciate her need and I hope that you consider giving it to her even though it doesn't quite meet all the, the things. I think there's reason because the upstairs is not usable so much for her anymore. And she does need a place where she can do her work.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any other members of the public who wish to make a comment about this issue? If so, please state your name.
Diane, you're muted.
Diane, you're still on mute.
Okay, okay. I'm Diane Alvin. I live, I'm at 13133 Ludlow. I live directly across the street from Joan. And we have been neighbors for, and friends for 32 years, as I wrote in my letter. And I, I want to speak to her artistry and to the importance of her artwork. I mean, we, I am also aging in place and I may need a same, similar variance at some point in the near future. But in the meantime, Joan's artwork is fantastic and it's very difficult to like schlep up and down a basement stairs to, you know, to do her, her kind of art. And having access at the ground level is really important to that. And, you know, I'm, and given her artistry, I'm sure that the addition will be, of course, beautiful and appropriate. And, um, and I think that, you know, the city needs to be flexible about people, people's needs and people's changing needs as they age and their physical needs and their professional needs change. So, and I totally support it. And living across the street, she's had that studio in her basement forever. There has never been any inconvenience as a neighbor from her having a studio there. So I want to reiterate that. So thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to make a comment? If so, please state your name. Not seeing any, I will close the public participation portion of this item. And I'd like to open it up to the board members for more comments and at some point, a motion.
Gordon, it's Mitch. I have a question. Here's my question. Suppose the house were sold. I mean, this is just hypothetical. Let's say the hu- house was sold and it was purchased by a, a couple of around 28 years old, let's say, who are starting out their family. And they've got two kids under five. And they come to us and say, well, we have this 20, 2,800 and something square foot house, but we really need a big playroom for the kids on the first floor. Really make our life easy. The kids be right there and lots of place to run around. Right? How would we decide that? You know, suppose we had somebody who wanted to put their gun collection in a big room with lots of gun racks. He needed that extra 400 square feet because somebody else didn't want it in the living room.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond, if I could respond for a quick second on that. Hank. I think that there's, that those are kind of apples and oranges. And I think that there's a couple of differences here. One, younger families expanding beyond the scope of what the zoning ordinance allows is not referenced in the master plan. However, aging in place is referenced in the master plan. And as a result of that, you could make the argument that while it may not necessarily be in the zoning ordinance to grant exactly this, that the master plan does envision aging in place. And as a result, some accommodations may need to be made in order to allow that to happen. We've talked in the past about the Fair Housing Act. We've talked in the past about ADA, which is not, ADA is not a requirement. So we weren't using that, but the Fair Housing Act does have some thought that applies to that. But having said that, the difference would be is that you're looking at a situation where the applicant wants to age in place. The master plan envisions aging in place. There is a senior advisory committee in Huntington Woods. So the city commission, the master plan, all envision people trying to age in place. I can also tell you, not that I'm being so much of a proponent, but I'm just explaining the thought process. I'm a veteran of three knee transplants. I've had a second one done on my leg, one leg twice. So I can tell you that getting up and downstairs is absolutely miserable at times. But having said that, I know that I choose to live in a bungalow. Could I go and buy a ranch? Maybe, but it's not likely in Huntington Woods because those are at a premium and you can't find them. And they're usually gone before they hit the multi-list. So what people are facing themselves with is reuse and realignment of their existing property, which I believe is where Ms. Schwartz is going here with her, with her argument. I think it's less about the art and I think it's less about what the room is used for and more about the aging in place. And to the extent that that helps, that's, I can offer that.
So, so Hank.
Yeah.
Just to talk this through because I consider this to be a radical proposal, honestly.
It's a lot. It's a big ask.
You know, we already talked about dogs. We've talked about so many cases where people come in with very persuasive personal reasons.
Right.
Wanting something. And my assumption as a board member is I always credit people who are making proposal with having a good personal reason for wanting what they want.
Absolutely.
The question is, does it conform to the, the law, number one, and number two, the degree of discretion the board has under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act? And that's where I think the difficulty is here. Let me ask you a question about aging in place.
Yes.
The master plan, generally speaking, is supposed to function as a guide to the city commission in adopting zoning regulations.
That is correct.
Has the city commission done that?
We are currently, this year, going through our master plan redo. We are, it's on the list of things that we are looking at for this year, the coming year, 2021. So to answer your question, are we going to have different aging in place strategies between this year and next year? The answer to that is very likely yes. Might some of them be radical? The answer there again is quite possibly yes. I think what we're looking at here is more of a situation where you have the master plan, you have the senior advisory committee, and you have a city commission that is very interested in keeping our Huntington Woods people in Huntington Woods and not having to leave Huntington Woods. So I think that that's one of the things that's going to happen. So when you look at what it is, and I'm, and I'm, pardon me for a second because I'm kind of thumbing through the master plan here as, as we're looking at it. Hold on one second here. One of the goals is, is to promote housing that accommodates residents of all ages and strive to retain affordable housing. So they do envision, and that's just one thing that I happened to flip to fairly quickly. So they encourage development of Woodward Avenue for like townhomes and that, and maintain city stock of smaller detached, single-family homes. Assist older residents so that they may remain in their homes as they age. This is one of the objectives. Assist older residents so that they may remain in their homes as they age. Consider development of housing for seniors and planned locations. But basically what they're saying is, and the key sentence that I take out of that anyway, is assist older residents so that they may remain in their homes as they age. And in order to do that and comply with the master plan, there's going to have to be some accommodations. Whether those accommodations come from the zoning board of appeals or whether those accommodations come from a more stringent review of the needs of the residents as they have changed since our 2008 master plan, that may be, I can tell you that that's going to be looked at. That's already been discussed and there is a senior advisory committee. So that may be one thing. If you were looking for some way to approve this, one of the, one of the caveats may be that it may comply with the master plan's intents and it allows, it would do substantial justice to the applicant by allowing them to age in place. And you're going to run into this as longtime residents of Huntington Woods age and they age in place. A lot of what's happened is, and, and I can tell you that I've lived here except for a few years since 1961. I went to Burton School. So I've seen a lot of changes in Huntington Woods. And part of the thing is, is that people don't want to leave here. They do want to age in place. So as a result, this may be how you can accommodate it if you choose to do that. I'm not saying you should and I'm not saying you shouldn't because I don't get a vote.
So let's say, last question, then I'll, I'll refrain.
Sure.
But let's say you have somebody who's, say, my 28-year-old people.
Okay.
And they love Huntington Woods. They're planning to raise their kids in Huntington Woods. And right now they need that extra 400 square foot because it's the perfect playroom. And they're, and they come and say, look, we're going to live here our whole lives. Our kids are going to grow up here. They'll have all this space to play. Then they will move out. Their grandchildren will come and play in this playroom. And after a while, when we're too infirm to walk up the stairs, we're going to move downstairs and sleep in that room. So is that an aging in place argument, Hank?
I would say the difference.
Or you have to be over 70 or something before you can make the argument.
Again, that's more along the lines that I was thinking. And where I would draw the distinction with that is, is that somebody who's 28 that's thinking about aging in place, with all due respect, ain't there yet. I mean, I'm 60, I'm, I'm 62 years old. I'm a whole lot closer. So if you have somebody that comes to you with a problem that is imminent, that is there, I would say that would carry a lot more weight than somebody who's roughly 40 years removed from the same problem.
All right.
And I don't know that that helps you Mitch or not, but that's.
I mean, if, if you want to follow the law, no.
No, and I understand that. And that's, that's the thing. It's like, you know, you have to determine whether or not this fits with something that you can get behind or whether it doesn't. But having said that, I did want to point out that it is referenced in the master plan. And then, hold on one second here. Again, there is a place in the master plan and another section that offers, according to the United States Administration on Aging, when asked about their preferences for housing, many seniors answer, what I would really like to do is to stay right here. They can do it through home modification repairs. Research suggests that one-third to one-half of home accidents can be prevented by modification and repair. Having said that, you know, keeping Ms. Schwartz off the stairs might be one of those, might be one of those issues. Examples of modification can include replacement of door handles with levers, installation of ramps. Older people tend to live in older homes that often need repairs and modifications. Over 60% of older homes live in homes more than 20 years old. Home modification and repairs also includes alterations to homes that are to prove a home's overall condition and safety. So that's one of the things. I, you know, again, I, I can't, is this a perfect case? No. But I mean, you can argue back and forth the minutia of what it is. But I, you know, I mean, I can offer those kind, those things from the master plan, the statistics that you've already been furnished with, which do weigh into it, the style of architecture of the home. And then for the rest of it, you know, I mean, the board's going to have to make a decision.
Any other board members with a comment?
I, I do. This is Todd. Thank, Hank, I appreciate your aging in place and how you, you brought that up and talked about it, that being in the master plan for the city and, and more, and Mitch, you know, again, you're making us think through this, which I appreciate. One of the things that I'm, I'm thinking of here and early on, you talked about how this, the ordinance had been changed, Hank, with this lot and things like that. Where it was before it was in, I guess, within code or whatever, and now it's not because of something changed or because the house is. I guess it within code or whatever, and now it's not because of, uh, something changed or because the house has been here for so long. Can you clarify that a little bit?
Yes, uh, back in two thousand and, uh, I want to say sixteen seventeen, uh, the zoning ordinance was amended and it was gone through and it was actually rewritten. Part of the problem was, is that a lot of the houses that were being built were huge square boxes within the city. So as a result, what the planning commission decided to do at that point, and it was affirmed by the city commission, was to lower the starting minimum house size, but gain architectural features, through architectural features, building height and criteria that could gain some of that square footage back. But a house that used to be in the R one D district, which is where Ms. Schwartz is, started out as twenty-five hundred feet by right. Currently it's nineteen hundred square feet by right. And there's some bonus features that get you up to twenty-five hundred. But at twenty-five hundred square feet, um, there was a lot size bonus that would allow you to go bigger. Uh, there were different things like that that are configured differently now. So the answer is, would this have been allowed a hundred percent under the old ordinance? The answer is no, but the ask would have been much smaller. So that's kind of how that falls into. Under no circumstance, if you were to take like a carport or a car, which now the ordinance is six hundred and fifty square foot maximum. And it was under the old zoning ordinance, the eight hundred twenty-nine point five square foot carport would be not allowed under either. At the time that it was built, it was built in such a manner that it's an integral part of the architecture. And as a result, that's why I believe that taking it off or shortening it or making it smaller or altering it in any way, shape or form would do the architecture an injustice. So that's kind of a problem with that. So I think you really have two issues here and I don't want to make it seem like there's only one. One is the maximum house size and two is the lot coverage. And again, the lot coverage issue is a lot easier than the maximum house size issue. So I, I think even Mitch alluded to that.
Yeah, I, I mean, my attitude is that we, I, it, it's not too hard to become persuaded to grant a variance on the lot cover.
Right.
Uh, the, the house size is what I'm stuck on.
Right. And, and the issue with that becomes is, is that one really doesn't do any good without the other because they, they go together in this particular instance.
That's understood.
Yeah.
I, so one of the things that I, I'm, I'm looking at this, I wrote down, you know, we, we want to have that affordable housing within, you know, as part of the master plan.
Yeah.
As this rolls out, what happens as, as we age in place? And again, not everybody's going to be having these asks, but we, we do have to start getting creative because all of a sudden we're going to have that, um, those massive homes that, uh, were, that we didn't want, you know, or I shouldn't say didn't want, but the city, you know, that we didn't want to become Birmingham. Where the lot size went right to the corner of each lot size and, and all of a sudden we had the Bigfoot homes. We're, that's what I think we're trying to stay away from, uh, within Huntington Woods. And then, so this seems, and I, I'm just thinking out loud hypothetical, this seems, could become a way that we all of a sudden have these, um, uh, bigger homes that we were trying to stay away from because of aging in place. So it's, we kind of put ourselves in a catch twenty-two place. It's, again, um, I'm not against, I totally against this idea, uh, for Joan in her situation. I, I just don't know where the city, um, goes on the creativity of, you know, it goes back to that second floor. It sounds like the second floor and probably the basement too becomes as, as we age in place for all of us. I'm many, 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 many years away from that.
Yeah.
But, why, Gordon, why did you laugh?
Listen out the window.
But it, 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 it becomes, um, the, the, the second floor definitely becomes a hardship for a, a lot of us. Uh, my bedroom right now is on the second floor. Do we get creative with elevators and things like that from an aging in place, but? And I'm not asking that. Sorry I even brought that up, but it just, you know, the, there's so many things. It's a, it becomes a slippery slope, but we also have to honor those that have been residents and think about them that have been residents for so many years.
See.
Okay, I'm done.
All right. Is this still the board discussing?
Yes.
All right. I, I mean, this is what we're struggling with because there are so many good reasons for people improving their homes. And I, I don't, I mean, I understand aging in places is a goal, sort of a, a community goal. So is bringing in new families. When I brought up the idea of, of a young family with kids who want a playroom, that seemed to be discounted by the city representative as being persuasive or meaningful. But we surely we have a policy for bringing in new families with, with small children. I can't make a difference in my mind between somebody who wants a, and a bigger space for a playroom for storing some kind of special collection, for just roaming around in, or for art, or for sleeping. Maybe the argument's stronger that if you really need to have a bedroom on the first floor, because that's, that's sort of a common use to all homes, as opposed to a special use like an art studio or a, a dog run. You know, it's just that what we have here is a gross, uh, proposed gross violation of, of, of the policy on non-conforming dimensional, uh, requirements. It's already a problem in this house. And Todd, that's sort of what you're talking about. And after a while, every, the, the law goes out the window because everybody's got a good reason and they're nice people.
Hey Hank, can you let, uh, Ben back in? Sorry.
Uh, okay.
He dropped out. He just texted me.
Okay. Is that?
There he is.
Okay. Where did he go?
I was hoping Ben would have a good argument that defeated my argument and got everybody home here.
I would just say Mitch is a, you know, cranky lawyer type and, uh, we're, we're the ZBA because it's like the, it's like the court of equity and, and when there are, uh, I'm not necessarily making that case here, but I, I think that we have a unique, jurisdiction or, you know, uh, framework within which to make holistic decisions that make sense. Um, I'd say I'm, I want to support this one. I'm, I'm, I'm having a little trouble finding that toehold as well. Not because of the, uh, neighbor. I think that the, the distance, the buffer in the backyard there, they can avoid each other as, uh, as they will probably choose to.
They can be by a row of arbivores.
Yeah. There's always, there's always arbivores. We don't, we have, we have no jurisdiction over there. Um, but again, I was not sure quite what, uh, I missed over the last three to five minutes, but, uh, I'm a little stuck here as much as it, as, as, useful certainly, as all of the neighbors' support or almost all of the neighbor's support is, I'm just sort of a little stalled myself.
Okay, uh, are there any other comments from other board members? Hey Hank, um, any? I will ask the board for a motion, but I know that everybody's wrestling with this. Uh, that, and that's ultimately where we have to go is, 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 is to a motion and I understand how difficult this one is.
I don't think it pays to separate on this because the two are completely relevant to each other.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
So i- i- if you give one and not the other, it negates the other.
Yeah, I'll say, maybe it's been said before, but I think that the term I'm looking for is the, the carport is a, a MacGuffin. Like it, to me, it's not, it doesn't really move the needle. Either way, it seems like it would be a, a kind of a inefficient bargain to trade it away when that has some both utility for, uh, the applicant and like an aesthetic appeal. It doesn't really fa- not a factor. It just, if I'm just speaking for myself, of course.
I, I brought up the idea of trading it away, but that was what, the, the misunderstanding on my part that the carport counted in the house size.
Got it.
If the carport does not count in the house size, then to, in my mind, it's, it's possible to approve a variance on the lot coverage because, not because of the carport, but because of the it, the very deep nature of the lot, which mitigates the issue of too much lot coverage.
Mm-hmm. That's, that, the, the lot shape, uh, is
Right, so.
It's, it's close, is, is sort of inching the right way.
On that issue, if we could, if we approved the, the house size, the lot coverage would be a throw-in in my view.
Yeah.
More comments?
Can I just say one more, a couple more things?
Yes, go ahead, Joan.
Um, I, I, I do think that we're mixing apples and oranges when we're talking about making an addition for a young new family, because that is not relevant here in my opinion. Also, I want you to know that I have looked into having an elevator put in. And, um, if the objecting neighbor doesn't want to look at, uh, my beautiful room, an elevator which would have to go outside to go all the way from the basement up to my second floor surely won't be a, aesthetic to look at.
I think the objecting neighbor is more a matter of personal relations than being particularly important for this decision. We're not, we're not worrying about that.
Okay.
It's, it's worth, I thought the person was entitled to have it put noted on the record, but it's really not a big deal.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Adam?
I, I mean, I think, I mean, I, I think I'm, I think I'm almost there with, with you talking. First of all, the overwhelming, uh, support here. I, I mean, I haven't been on the board for that long, but this is by far the most I've seen. Um, in, in terms of support for an applicant. And, you know, when we talk about aging in place and, and, and the master plan, um, I, I think I'm, I think I'm there. I, I think I'm, I think I'm sold on this. And, and if, I mean, I, I, I'll go ahead and make a motion um, to grant the appeals for the variance at one-three-one-two-eight Ludlow, to allow the nine hundred twenty-one square foot overage to the maximum house size at ten point one percent maximum lot coverage. Um, based upon the aging in place factors that we discussed and, and the overwhelming support by her neighbors that are here tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Joe Clay.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion before I ask for a vote?
Yeah, I, 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 I think it's important and it might be in there, Adam, um, that we have that. Because again, I, I'm trying to set the precedent when this comes to us at other times that we've got some solid record-keeping or, or reasoning behind it. Because I can appreciate, uh, everybody supporting this. And I think where I had started to, I, 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 I do, um, think that the aging in place, that is where our city wants to go and I, and I think that's a solid, um, reasoning. But again, if we're on a smaller lot size, all this stuff, then it becomes really difficult. But I think there were some key things just said a few minutes ago around the deep nature of the lot, the shape and size of the lot, that it really doesn't impact that side of it. Because it's so deep and it won't really, you know, be part of it. So I, I don't know, is that, is that covered where it, it says that, that is not shared by other lots? I, I don't know if it's a.
I, I mean, I take it as the, the irregular lot size, um.
It affords the ability to do this. It's not really a hardship. Or Mitch, do you get where I'm going with that?
No. I, I don't think that the depth of the lot is anything to do with the issue of maximum house size. It's, that's, that's why I understand the law. I mean, we didn't want to access the big houses. That's all it, it's, um, and it's not, it, 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 it's a stretch maybe even to attribute the, the lot air coverage to add to the depth of lot is, as a, a kind of a, a practical difficulty to get you around it. But for a house size, no, I don't think so. I
Okay.
Perhaps we could, to clarify the record, put in the, make some, some statements like this that the rationale for the decision shall be understood only to apply to applicants who are over seventy and not to young families, not to other persons with special and interesting uses for additional space. And that way we would put a fence around the rationale.
And that one worries me.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only thing with, the only thing with drawing the line at seventy.
Yeah.
That's, that's problematic for me.
Yes, it is certainly problematic, but that's the basis of the decision as in the way everyone has argued it. Which is that people are.
There's, 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 the basis of the decision is for people who are not necessarily, I mean, people can be sixty-eight and have two knee replacements or, you know, two, two knee replacements.
Oh, well, but that's like having dogs.
But it, no, because it's, it's more, it's more a physical, uh, I, I don't want to say disability because it's not, it's not really a disability, but it's, it's a physical hampering as, it, it, that's, that's impairing someone's ability to, to, to get up and down their stairs.
Right. If, if the goal is to balance, like, give people the, the full benefit of their I thought the property with knowing that there's some risk of, of, uh, effect on the neighbors or passersby. I don't know that we need to put a number of, of, of like new joints replaced on this.
Well, the, the point is that.
To the aging in place, which is.
Standards for variance under the law relate to the nature of the property, not the nature of the occupant.
Yes. Uh, if, right, we're not saying this is particular to a certain pet or a certain vocation or to my mind, a specific age or mobility threshold. It's just broadly how we're making houses, we're making like marginal concessions on a case-by-case basis that are not precedential to let people, you know, live fully in knowing that it runs with the land and someone new is going to live there eventually and will have their own legged issues or spatial issues. Deal with those.
Hank, does the motion include any reference to the master plan and aging in place?
Not as Adam stated it.
No, I, I said, I said, I said because of the master plan.
Okay.
Um, and aging in place. The one written here doesn't, but.
That should be part of the motion and, and, and that might be what we use at our.
Why don't, why don't you restate, Adam, just so that people could be clear on this?
Sure. I'll, I'll move to grant the appeal for the variance at one-three-one-two-eight Ludlow to allow nine hundred twenty-one square foot overage to the maximum house size, ten point one percent for the maximum lot coverage. Um, on the basis of, of the, the master plan acco- accommodating aging in place as well as the overwhelming support that, that's been expressed here uh, by the community tonight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Joe, Mitch.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
If, I'm not sure that Adam would accept it, but I would like to amend the motion by removing the reference to, to overwhelming support. I really find that to be a very troublesome factor.
Well, but it's, it's one of the factors. I mean, the.
It is, but mob rule could come in and we could get 500 people and I.
And it's not unanimous either.
Fair enough.
You know, for a factor that in, like cranky monstrosity guy is on there.
Yeah, he's an important guy around the community, he should be taken into account.
Yeah, I mean, everybody is worked way in.
That's right. I'm not a relative, but I, I keep getting phone calls for him.
Agents.
So the, so to clarify.
Yeah, I can, I'll restate it one more time.
Well, the second, no, no, we've got it, but the second,
We got it.
Oh, Joe would have to accept the amendment and Adam would have to accept the amendment.
I, I accept the amendment.
I'll accept it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Joe?
Yes.
You accept it?
Yes, I do.
Okay, anybody else need to state that they accept it? If I have to, yes, I accept it. Okay, we have a motion before us and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All again? Are there any, is there anyone who's voting against it?
We have a 6-0 for it.
Okay, thank you for it, it, the motion passes.
I'll adopt.
Is there any further discussion? Joan, do you have anything to say?
I just want to thank you all very much, I appreciate your support, I really do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank your participation.
Yeah, this is a, we, we do these because we, we are concerned and, and nothing of this should be personal, it's, we're, we try to get through to what is best, you know, people can understand, so we appreciate your patience in this.
I, I fully get it, no, I do.
This is Ron, as, as an observer, I don't come to many of these, but I, I really want to commend all of you for the, the amount of time and the energy and thoughtfulness that you devoted to this and, and the amount of emotional and, and, and intel- and intelligent effort, energy that went into making the decision, you know, we, we all get paid big bucks for these types of volunteer things that you guys are doing. And it, it's, we should commend our city and, and the people that we live with, that you guys put the effort in. So thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Ron, that.
I'm just glad you got rid of your shared garage, I mean.
That was on our radar.
Well, thank, thanks for your participation, Ron.
Thanks, we agree, we agree with Ron's comments 100%.
100%.
Thank you, John and Suzie.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further for you this evening.
Okay, I need to open it up to public participation one more time for anyone who wants to make any comments about anything the ZBA has to do. Not seeing any. I close public participation and I look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Adam seconded.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.